All right, thank you for inviting us to come. We're glad to be here and share some of the updates from the medical center. And I know Dr. Davis is usually here and it's a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. So at the medical center, today I really just wanted to talk about the testing because that tends to be the biggest question that we are getting over and over again from the community as far as what's available, what we're doing at the medical center and sort of our numbers. So I wanted to go over those with you. So the antigen testing, which is the nasopharyngeal swab, which is that first picture on the right there, and I think Jason had said it goes to your brain, but that's not quite accurate. It goes, it just kind of goes far down into the nasopharynx or in that deep space to get a good sample. So we take a sample from both nostrils and send that in. So that test usually takes around 48 hours to come back. We've really seen an improvement in our turnaround for that test. So far today, from about an hour ago, we've sent 53 tests. We've had two positives and 14 are still pending. And you'll see that number has kind of gone up over this last week or two because we're now going to bring our physical therapy service back into the medical center. And before we're bringing patients back in, we're really, we started a new protocol where we're going to be testing those patients for COVID before they're allowed to come back into the facility. So we're, there's a big uptick in our testing. And that doesn't necessarily mean there's a lot of symptomatic patients. So we also are doing antibody testing now, and this is something that we've just kind of started doing, and it's available via Quest at the moment. This is a serum test. So serum means blood or plasma. So serum is taken either from a finger stick or from a blood draw. So the one that we're doing now at the clinic is a serum test with a blood draw. We're waiting for the finger stick test to come through, but right now we're just doing the blood draw. And those results have been coming back really fast, so within 24 to 48 hours. So those are, those are available as well. So far, we've had nine tests sent, zero positives, two pending.
And who are those folks that are getting those? How do they qualify for an antibody test?
Yeah, so we'll go, we'll go into who's getting what tests. It's a good question, and that's a common one that we're getting. So I want to, I want to make sure that everyone knows who we're testing for that. So the antigen testing, the antigen is the nasopharyngeal test, and that tests for an acute infection. So that is a viral RNA test that tests for actual virus in the nasopharynx. So the protocols that we're using, I'll go over in a moment. And we're trying to relax those protocols to get more people tested, but we're still trying to have some sort of protocol and guidelines in place for all of our providers. And the common question that we're getting a lot is why don't we test everyone? So this is a really important question, and I think that it bears repeating. Dr. Davis did go over a lot of this in his last week's talk. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that on our website, I would encourage everybody to look at that. He goes over all of these things in greater detail than I will tonight, and it's really informative and great. But the, the reason that we're not testing everyone and we're not offering sort of testing for asymptomatic individuals is because of the possibility of false negatives is a one reason. So if you don't have outward symptoms of coronavirus and you take a swab, the possibility that you're not going to collect any virus back in that area is higher. So we're potentially telling you, yes, you're, you know, you don't have the virus, but maybe you do, and you're still an asymptomatic carrier. So it doesn't really, it doesn't really give you a lot of valuable information if you're asymptomatic or don't have any symptoms of coronavirus. Another important thing is that we try to, we're trying to conserve our testing supplies. So everyone's heard of the, you know, shortages that everybody's experiencing. And right now, we don't have a shortage per se, but we do want to keep our testing supplies available for if and when we do need those for more symptomatic patients. And then also another important thing is today's negative test doesn't mean tomorrow you're going to not potentially go out and pick up the disease. So we've talked a lot about this as far as like a comparison to a sexually transmitted infection. You know, today you can come in and get a STI check for gonorrhea chlamydia, and you go out and have, you know, exposure that, that evening and you could get it. So it doesn't, it can kind of provide a sense of false security and maybe not be so diligent about wearing our masks and using our PPE if you have a negative antigen test, but it doesn't really confer a lot of valuable information long-term. So the antigen screening protocol, so this speaks to your question, Annie, as far as who were, who are screening for the antigens. So this is active infection. So again, we've kind of relaxed our, our protocol a little bit, but we're really trying to stick with these parameters. So any two of the following, which is fever, respiratory or GI symptoms, so dry cough, sore throat, shortness of breath, those types of respiratory symptoms, and then GI symptoms, diarrhea, vomiting, nausea, those types of things. And then the interesting one that's been tossed around a lot and that we are using as a protocol is loss of taste and/or smell. And then the vulnerable population, so travel to a high-risk area, which that's very much expanded. It's not international travel anymore. It's community-acquired. So I guess LA County could be considered a high-risk area. So, you know, that is one of the parameters that we're using. Healthcare workers for sure, and anybody who's in contact with a known COVID-positive patient. Our also immunocompromised patients, our patients who are over 60, patients who have diabetes. We know these patients tend to do a little poor when they do contract COVID. So we're a little bit more aggressive in testing those patients. Also, our pregnant patients and anybody with heart, lung, kidney disease. So we have expanded our, our protocols. So this is kind of what we're trying to go by in the clinic, and it really falls in line with what the CDC is recommending as well. So moving on to antibody testing. So antibody testing is the serum test or the, the blood test that we're doing. And we, so I'm going to back up and just kind of describe what an antibody is. So the, the picture in pink, it kind of gives a cartoon display of what an antibody is. So an antibody is essentially a protein that your body makes in response to a specific antigen, such as a virus or a bacteria. So the normal response in your body is it sees a bacteria or a virus or a foreign body, and it mounts an antibody response. And that can be either from infection, or it can also be through a vaccine or an immunization. It's, the antibodies are the same for both of those responses. So the antibodies, it's testing for, it's not used for to detect if you have COVID-19, like an acute infection. That's not what it's for. It's used to find out if you've been exposed to it and if you've mounted an immune response to that. So this is, it can be a tricky thing right now just because there's so much that we don't know about coronavirus, and there's a lot of unknowns in the tests that are out there commercially available, but we'll get into that a little bit more. It does take about five to 10 days, more closely to eight to 10 days for our bodies to sort of mount an antibody response that's able to be picked up in a test. So patients that are in the hospital, they're not testing for this right away. They're allowing your body to kind of mount enough of an immune response to it, for it to be picked up on in a test. And so the question here again is why don't we test everyone? And I think the, the sort of push is for that to happen eventually. You know, a lot of public health experts and physicians are really, you know, pushing for that to happen just to sort of see what is the exposure in the community, how many people perhaps have had COVID and didn't know. So there's a lot of question about that, and I've heard a lot of patients say, maybe I had it back in December, or I had it back in January. And I think that's a, a common thing that a lot of people are thinking. And that's, you know, I don't think that that's totally out of, out of the question, but we're seeing from the data that California has, doesn't have as high of a percentage of potential exposures than, than was once thought. So that's kind of a wait-and-see kind of thing. We're not really sure. So another reason that we don't test everyone quite yet is because the commercially available tests, like I alluded to before, aren't as reliable. So there's been a lot of tests that have come out. There's a lot of profitability that can, that's being, you know, potentially, if people are trying to kind of take advantage of that maybe and put out tests that maybe aren't as accurate as we would like them to be. One of the studies that has been talked about a lot kind of in the social media and online is the Stanford test that came out that showed that there was maybe a higher percentage of the population, of their subset of population that had been tested positive for the antibodies. So the extrapolation from that data was, yeah, maybe there has been a higher percentage of Californians that have been exposed and perhaps asymptomatic. But there was, that test that they used, the antibody test that they used, was subsequently banned because the Chinese government, the equivalent of their FDA hadn't tested its validity. So Stanford's kind of standing by their results, but it just kind of speaks to the sort of broad, unknown question mark that's kind of out there. So antibody testing at CIMC. So we're currently using the blood draw, like I mentioned, and we're sending it off to Quest Lab. And Quest does have a, from what they're reporting, a really high sensitivity, high specificity test, meaning that the results are accurate. So that's the test that we're using right now. We're waiting on a point-of-care or the finger stick test from South Korea, and that one also just sort of serendipitously is kind of one of the ones that is also, has a high accuracy, and we're feeling that's a good, it's going to be a good machine for us and it's going to give us accurate results. So going to who we're testing, so we're recommending anybody who had kind of more, a more severe respiratory or GI illness between the months of January to present. So somebody who had maybe a flu and had a positive flu test, we wouldn't recommend, not that you can't get the antibody test, but that was probably the flu. So, you know, if you had sort of an unknown or, you know, a more severe or prolonged fever, a dry cough, some of these symptoms that are kind of correlating with, with COVID, you can get that antibody test. And we're doing those, if you can, with antibody and antigen tests, we're asking the patients to call the clinic and schedule an appointment with a provider so that we can kind of talk to you about which test might be the right one for you, and is it a, you know, is it the right thing to do? Is it something that is going to sort of change management? Are you at higher risk? Those types of questions that we'll be asking, and then ordering the test and sort of helping you schedule that test. So we're doing, we're trying to batch these tests so that the person that's doing the antigen test is in full PPE, and she's in the tent, and we're doing these sort of batches so that we protect her and protect our, our medical center. And then the antibody tests, they're, the serum tests are drawn in the lab. And again, we're really trying to batch those and make sure that we're limiting our exposures. So. My slide kind of got cut off, so I was on a Mac and it didn't really come out through. But the, the slide says, does a positive antibody test mean you are immune? And this is a really hot topic right now because we're sort of using it. Some of the literature I was reading today, some of the countries are sort of using a positive antibody test as sort of like a freedom pass, if you will, to go out and do what you want to do in the community. And I think that's really the wrong direction to go because we don't really know enough about the antibody and its, its sort of long-term immunity to be able to speak to that. And we don't really know, we know also that in certain countries, they've shown that patients who've had a positive COVID antigen, meaning they've had the acute infection, they've actually gotten it again. So, you know, there's just a lot of unknowns there. And so, yeah, according to the WHO, there's no conclusive evidence that having the SARS-CoV-2 antibodies will prevent a person from getting this virus a second time. And immunity can vary. So kind of an analogy that's helpful is sort of a measles, if you get an infection from measles, that imparts sort of lifelong immunity for the patient who gets measles versus like the influenza virus. If you get the flu one year, it doesn't mean you're never going to get it again. You can get it year after year after year. And also, if you get the vaccine for influenza, your antibodies, even if it protects you that, that flu season, those antibodies sort of wane over time. So you have to get the flu vaccine every year. So we're not really sure how coronavirus is going to act yet. We don't know how long these antibodies are going to stick around, and we don't know how that is going to play out long-term. So that's again, another big question mark that I think a lot of the vaccine companies are really struggling with, and also the question of mutation, you know, is the COVID virus going to mutate? And so far, there has been evidence of some mutation, but we feel that it, you know, again, it's just a big question mark. There's a lot, there's a lot behind that. So I want to just speak briefly about Governor Newsom's sort of the reopening and the report card from California, how we did and sort of why he's basing his recommendations on this early stage two. And when he talked about the stability of hospitalizations, the PPE inventory, the healthcare surge capacity, all these things, these proto, these, these things that he's looking at to make sure that we're ready, that we're doing this in a stepwise, organized fashion, and that we're not rushing to do, you know, rushing to open when we're not quite ready. And really, when you look at what they're, with the parameters that they're looking at and sort of the preparations that they're making, we really, at the medical center, talked about it a lot, and it's really spot-on with what we feel like is the right thing to do, you know, especially when it comes to the testing capacity and the contact tracing. So when Dr. Davis, I think it was a couple of, maybe last week, he was talking about slamming on the brakes versus pumping the brakes. And I think this really speaks to sort of that analogy is if we're going to open up, doing it in an organized and stepwise fashion, like Lisa, you were mentioning that, I think that's really important, that we prepare the community for whatever the plan is. But then being, being prepared as far as being able to pump the brakes, and that's that contact tracing. So if we find a little hotspot of outbreak, we're able to quickly test and isolate. So I think that's an important piece of the puzzle that, that they really were, you know, they're, they're putting together this sort of contact tracing army that is potentially going to be involved in helping the state do this in a really organized and public health-minded way. So I think it's a good thing. So the same thing, you know, with our preparedness, you know, we've, we've been able to see the stability of our hospitalizations over time, especially in LA. You know, their ability to take patients from the island if we need to transfer care, and that's been really streamlined and smooth, and we anticipate that that will continue as we're able to, you know, transfer patients off, and they're able to take those patients and help us, you know, manage those patients. Our PPE, we have, we have adequate supplies of personal protective equipment. We're doing well in that way. Our testing capacity, I spoke with our lab director today, and she feels confident that we have enough testing supplies, and our capacity is where it needs to be. And then the contact tracing capacity, I think we at the medical center had some good ideas as far as helping, you know, we're not a public health entity, but I do think that we, you know, we could talk more about that in our, you know, we'd love to help in any way that we can, and just help make sure that that piece is intact, because I think that's a really important piece of it. And then the public health guidance, and that just kind of speaks again to what Lisa was mentioning as far as making sure that our small business owners are prepared and they know what is expected of them, and everybody's following those, those guidelines. So with that. If anybody had any questions? Questions?
Any questions? Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I have three questions that have come in so far. The first one is from Randy Branick. He writes, "I am concerned for the safety of my family, employees, and the community. In your professional opinion, one, how can we assure that visitors to the island are COVID-free? Would you advise testing at public transportation terminals for boaters arriving on their own boats, flyers arriving on their own planes, et cetera? And two, what would be your recommendation for opening the island to visitors to ensure this level of safety? Thank you if you've covered this in your presentation."
Yeah, so those are, those are hard questions to answer. You know, I don't, I don't know the capacity of the Express to be able to do that type of testing. I don't think that's kind of in their wheelhouse necessarily, or their responsibility to do that. I think, you know, as far as opening the island up, again, I think it should be in a stepwise, really organized manner and following LA County's guidance as far as testing patients and, you know, really trying to be very diligent about following that in a stepwise way. And if we're going to, you know, if we're going to talk about testing, I think, you know, that's not really, I haven't seen that being as far as like a recommendation as far as coming into a community, maybe temperature-taking or something else like that that's kind of more viable to do on a kind of a quick basis. But I think a lot of this is just going to be opening up in a slow, slow manner and trying to, to make sure that we're not opening the floodgates, but just sort of doing it really stepwise and controlled.
Can I just ask? I would love to have you address the whole temperature-taking because people have said in the community, every single person on the Express should have their temperature taken before they get on the boat, but you don't have to have a fever to have COVID.
No, that's true.
And you don't have to have a fever in order to spread to someone else. So could you just talk about how, the effectiveness of the temperature thing?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one of the things that's sort of being put out there because it's kind of a quick point-of-care thing. It's like a screen, but it's, you're not going to catch everybody. You're right, you're just not. And I don't think that there's any way that, that that's in the realm of possibility for this island or any community to be able to keep the influx of potentially COVID patients, COVID-positive people coming in and out of their communities. It's just not going to happen, you know? So you're going to miss people no matter what you do. Even if you did a point-of-care COVID test right at the time, we know that asymptomatic patients are going to potentially be negative, you know, and still be able to spread that, spread COVID. So there's no perfect answer and no way to, to make sure that that's excluded.
And isn't it also that I, social distancing and masking is going to be on the books for a long time?
Absolutely.
And I think when that's, I hate to call it fear, but when that fear is what I'm hearing out there, social distancing and masking, and I was washing my hands, are the key.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that is going to be kind of the sort of keystone in really trying to keep the, the spread at bay, you know? I don't think that we're going, like I said, I really don't think that we're, there's any possibility of catching every single person that comes over to the island. It's just not, it's not feasible. But if we are organized in, you know, guiding our small business owners to, you know, keep the tables separate and be strict about having people wear masks on the ferry and all those things that we're already doing, just not relenting on those things, I think that will help a lot.
The next question I have is from Leslie Warner. She writes, "Thank you for this opportunity to ask questions. I realize some of my questions may be answered in your presentation. Please explain the CIMC website testing information. Do the number of tests displayed indicate the number of results that have been received? When will we begin to expand testing for all of our frontline workers in Avalon? And will LA County Health Department be providing support for contact tracing? Does CIMC have an improved and reliable antibody test?"
I didn't hear that last bit, but I'm going to kind of go stepwise through her question, the first ones.
Sure. So she writes, "I realize some of my questions may be answered in your presentation. Please explain the CIMC website testing information. Do the number of tests displayed indicate that the results have been received?"
Yeah, so I think our website might be a little behind over the last couple of days. So the numbers that I mentioned today are just, you know, maybe an hour old. So it's the, the antigen testing has been 53, there are 14 pending. And again, those are mostly asymptomatic patients who are wanting to come in for physical therapy. So, yeah, we're, we're trying to keep the website as updated as possible, and so some of them will, will reflect pending tests.
The next part of that is, "When will we begin to expand testing to all of our frontline workers in Avalon? And will LA County Department, Health Department be providing support for contact tracing?"
So it depends on what we're talking about as far as testing for all of our frontline workers. So again, it goes to the antigen versus antibody testing. So those are available now. If the frontline worker has any sort of symptoms, we definitely encourage them to make an appointment and talk to us and get tested. The antibody testing, that can be done now as well. So as far as coverage, you know, from my understanding, all COVID-related visits and testing is, should be covered. So they can always just call the, the medical center and ask to talk to one of the providers, and we'll help them out. And then as far as LA County, supporting contact tracing, they are, and that's sort of what I was alluding to about Newsom's proposal to start training. They're already, I think they have a lot of state workers that are not working right now. So they're planning on training those people to be contact tracers. And they're going to have a website that you can go to and take this free training. And so they're going to be starting off, I think, with 10,000 contact tracers that are going to help communities do that contact tracing, the isolation, and the testing. So that's, that is what we were so excited about because I think that that is exactly what we need.
The next question comes from Paula Patterson, and I'll read, I guess, each question in this.
That'd be great.
Because there's a couple of them.
Okay.
She writes, "I have a question for the question-answer segment of Dr. Davis's presentation. As test sites are now located throughout LA County, have arrangements been made to include Avalon in distribution of more tests here on the island?"
So we don't have a shortage right now of tests, so we don't necessarily need any, we don't need to take testing supplies from maybe these bigger institutions that are maybe at a shortage. So right now, we're not asking for any support with that. But as, you know, she was saying, as far as LA County and LA City are actually offering, offering those tests, and again, we're trying to follow suit, but, you know, keep our public health strategies in mind and conserving tests for, for those folks that potentially will need them down the road. So the testing is available. We have test kits available here, and we're good to go on all those things.
The next part of- Uh, the next part of this question, and then there's a statement afterwards, and I'll, I'll wait to read the statement, but she says, "When we begin to oper- uh, to open nonessential businesses on the island, do you think it would be prudent to test workers regularly who interface with the public?"
Hmm, yeah, I mean, I think I'm, I would sort of lean on LA County, um, public health as far as their recommendations for that. Again, today's negative doesn't mean tomorrow you're going to be negative. So again, it goes, it just speaks to utilization, proper utilization of our testing supplies, and I don't know, um, if that is necessary, if the healthcare workers and the frontline workers are wearing their masks and they're washing their hands and they're doing all those things, I don't know if those, if, if, you know, daily or every other day testing, I don't think that that's necessary for asymptomatic people.
Uh, the next part is a statement. She says, "I would also like to thank CIMC for their hard work and efforts to keep our community informed."
Yeah, that's nice. Yeah, it's definitely been a team.
And that's all the public comment I have.
It's definitely been, um, an amazing, uh, team to be a part of, and I just feel really, really grateful to have all of our providers here. And I think Dr. McGordy, are you still there?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Yeah, so if we have time, I would like for Dr. McGordy just to speak a little bit about his experience that, you know, he's in Kansas right now. So if, if you don't mind, uh, Dr. McGordy, just to kind of speak to the council about what's your, what's your experience up there right now.
Yes, certainly, and I hope that you can all hear me because occasionally things cut out when I'm listening and, um, I'm currently in southwest Kansas in a county called Stewart County. Um, we have a large meat processing plant here, uh, and it's considered, uh, essential. So it's been kept open during this whole, uh, event. They had five cases out here as of April 10th, and I was scheduled to come out here and work for a couple of weeks, um, I mean, 18th through the 30th of, uh, April, um, but it had to extend just based on the number of cases that we have. And it really goes to how important the social distancing and masks are because the community out there in Catalina has done an excellent job of participating and doing the right thing and maintaining social distancing and mask and not going out as much. The community here has, uh, not embraced that as much and it's generated some problems with, uh, community spread because, you know, currently we have 620 people positive in a community of about 20,000, and it certainly has taxed our hospital system at this time as well. Uh, we, uh, typically in the emergency department over a 24-hour period, we're, we're seeing 70% of our patients are either positive for this virus or people under investigation for, uh, this virus. And it's a sobering and frustrating experience sometimes taking care of these folks, and even the best laid plans can be, um, disrupted just based on, uh, having to use so much protective equipment or finding out that you need to call the National Guard in order to get a couple extra ventilators because we're trying to keep most of the patients here to take care of them. Uh, so we're, we've been struggling out here and trying to keep up and it's been, uh, a difficult thing. And I think that the thing that I notice most and if I could stress the most is, um, they, I, I honestly would have to say that I think they've been a bit reckless out here with allowing people to, um, not maintain the social distancing and allowing this, uh, meat processing plant, which, you know, by the way, supplies about 25 to 30% of the beef that America consumes, um, to stay open throughout this whole thing. So it's, uh, generated a, a lot of problems for the hospital. I think a lot of times, uh, especially out here, people don't understand what's happening within the four walls of the hospital and the amount of patients that we're caring for and the amount of people that we actually have to, uh, transfer to other places just because we're, we've run out of bed space in our facility. So I've been fortunate, I'm very appreciative of, um, the crew out there and allowing me to extend a little bit of time here because I think it's been valuable in trying to help, you know, the community out here and also it's been extraordinarily valuable in recognizing and understanding how, uh, these patients', uh, course of their illness, uh, continues and how long somebody can actually be sick with this. Uh, and it certainly seems that California has a better plan than Kansas does, and I'm not trying to throw Kansas under the bus, but the priorities here, I don't think were led by science and medicine, I think they were led more than, more by industry and, um, people's feelings that they didn't have to do the things that are difficult in order to prevent infection. And we have these numbers, even though most of our patients are younger, we have not had the, uh, nursing homes that have been affected, uh, out here. Um, and I don't believe that we've, uh, even had a single case that's associated with the nursing homes here in the community. Uh, most of it is associated with the plants and a lot of people who work there who go home and live with five or six or seven other people and then even then don't, um, participate in trying to stay away from those folks. It's very frustrating on our end because we've had experiences where we tested people in the ER and called them with the results two days later and found that they weren't at home. And even though they've had strict instructions to quarantine for 14 days, uh, even after the test was taken. Um, I know the question of testing is coming up and it's interesting, within the hospital, we've had some changes that we've had to make with testing because you end up testing the most important, uh, testing for the most important knowledge. So for example, we have the National Guard that's been, uh, deployed out here to help us with testing and they have some of the, you know, fast tests or point of care tests and some of the ones that are actually, um, more sensitive, uh, which are the, what they call PCR tests, which is a special way of, you know, isolating the virus. Uh, and we have determined that not everybody gets those tests. I mean, those tests are meant for patients that we have to transfer so that the other receiving facility knows that that patient is negative or patients that we're trying to determine where they go into our hospital, you know, in order to make sure that we don't put a positive patient on a floor, which we're calling a non-COVID floor. Um, and it's just been, um, a very, it's been a interesting experience. I, I can tell you certainly that it brings out the best in the people that you work with, uh, despite the stressors, um, but I certainly hope that, uh, it does not have to be experienced out there. And, um, my, my biggest, uh, thing that I could say is I know there's a lot of people who are concerned about, you know, whether they had it before, whether, you know, you know, what their status is, um, but the, um, the biggest thing that people can do is just continue to practice the, the simple things that are going to keep people safe because the curve that is still going up here in Kansas despite the relaxation of the stay-at-home order in many counties here in Kansas, um, that curve was considerably flattened out in California to the point where now they can make a decision based on science and medicine to determine that you can gradually open up, uh, the state again. Um, so it's, um, a bit of a complicated mess out here for, uh, better work, but, uh, so far, you know, we're kind of getting through it and I'm looking forward to getting my PCR test on Friday, which is more sensitive and specific and, you know, make sure that, uh, my status is unchanged. Uh, so that's, you know, I'm happy to, you know, when I, what I'll bring back to Catalina is, you know, hopefully some, you know, knowledge and also some ideas as to, you know, what can be done when you do have to change your plans because, uh, out here, our plans have changed every 24 to 48 hours based on, you know, space and availability and how many patients you're seeing and what you need to do in order to accommodate these folks as well as keep everybody who's trying to take care of them safe.
Well, thank you very much. That was, that's fascinating to hear, what you're going through, and yeah, please be safe. And Dr. Amy, is there any, any more questions? Michael, did we get?
Uh, one more question came in from Kathleen Hill Carlisle, um, and I do apologize, it's, there, there's a lot to unpack.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll kind of go slow. It says, "A lot of us are wearing cloth, uh, homemade masks. I see a lot of people touching them outside, pulling them off and on, and I know, uh, I used the same mask multiple days. What are safe practices for homemade, non-disposable masks? I heard one doctor say to treat the outside as if it's contaminated. Can you go over how to handle, wear, and remove a homemade mask?" And then there's a second part to that.
So I think homemade masks, there, it's not going to prevent you from getting COVID if somebody coughs or sneezes, it's, it's not an N95. So it's essentially to keep you from getting your germs on other people. So, um, if you are using your mask and it's been a couple of days and it looks a little soiled or it feels a little grimy, I put it in the wash. If you're using like a surgical mask like I have, you know, I use it until I feel like it's too soiled and then I throw it away. If I'm concerned that I'm potentially going to be exposed to a COVID potential patient or I have, somebody has a cough or whatever, I'll put an N95 on. So the face masks that folks are wearing out in public, again, they're to keep your coughs and sneezes and your droplets from getting on other people. Um, so those should just be washed every day or every couple of days. I think that's fine.
Uh, the second part of that is, "As we open up and have all, uh, workers wearing masks, will the employer have to provide disposable masks or daily sanitized cloth masks? If you work in a restaurant, especially in the kitchen and get sweaty, it's hard to use the same mask. Will there be a public source for fresh masks? Glad the hospital has enough PPE." And some of those might actually get, uh, answered later on in a future item of discussion, but.
Yeah, I can't really speak to that, like what the community members are going to do. I mean, I would recommend that they have some sort of plan for that, but, um, you know, I, I do think that, you know, reusing fabric or homemade masks is fine as long as they're, they're washed.
And that's all the public comment I have.
So I, obviously over the last couple of months, we've gotten so much information that it's been interesting to digest it all. But I think at this point, it warrants the conversation about the fact that the, the only way that we would ever stay COVID-free forever is if we never had any transfers of people from the mainland to the island.
Yeah.
And so I think, um, you know, and, and I, I'm not the, the foremost knowledgeable person on this, but the whole idea behind the safer at home and staying at home is to slow the spread of the virus so that all of this medical care could be put in place so that as each person had, had potentially been exposed or contracted the virus, that there was medical care available for them when they needed it. So whereas other countries or cities that have had these massive outbreaks, there's not enough care, there's not enough workers to care for so- for some, and there's not enough equipment, all of that, which has been pretty detrimental. But I, I think that there's some misinformation out in the community that, you know, we'll stay at home and the virus, we're not going to get the virus. Um, and, and I just want somebody other than me explaining the fact that, that we're not ever going to be 100% COVID-free. It's, that's not the whole purpose of stay at home and it's not, it's just sort of
Right.
to help us get stuff in place.
Right, and so that goes back to that flattening of the curve. So if you were to calculate the area under both curves, it's the same, right? So a certain amount of people are going to have to get infected and have sort of the herd immunity where everybody's been, enough people have been, um, exposed to and have mounted an antibody response to sort of squelch the virus that way, or there's a vaccine. Um, so either one, they're both going to take a lot of time. So this isn't going anywhere anytime soon. The area under the curve on the, the, the big spike kind of exceeds our hospital capacity. So that's sort of flattening the curve, again, is just to allow the cases to come in a more spread-out time span so that hospitals are able to, um, take care of those patients and we're not running out of ventilators and making those terrible decisions on who gets one and who doesn't. So right now in California, and why Governor Newsom has put in these, um, new kind of state, early stage two, is that we have that capacity. We feel like we are sort of ready to take care of the patients that we know are going to still get it because no, not very, very many people have been exposed to it as we're seeing from the antibody tests that are out there. So we know people are going to still get it, but we have ti- had time to prepare now. So we have the PPE, we have the testing, we have the beds available in the hospitals, we have the ventilators, we have all the things that we weren't prepared for initially because we've never seen this before. So we weren't, we couldn't, you know, take care of all those people right at the get-go. So this time that we've spent in our homes, doing the safer at home, the shelter place, it, it was so important to be able to allow our communities to prepare for the next onslaught, which is going to probably happen, you know? So we have to really, um, stay diligent about these PPE measures and all the things that we're, they're putting out there because it has made a huge difference and, you know, we are a lot better prepared for, um, patients who are going to continue to be exposed and infected, but they'll have a much higher chance of, um, recovering from the infection because we're more prepared. So, um, again, yeah, we're not going to not see COVID out here, it's just not going to happen unless you close down the borders forever. So that's just not, it, you know, that's unrealistic, of course. So we're going to have to, and it, it doesn't even mean that it's going to be the tourist's fault, you know? We're still going over and going shopping and exposing ourselves and coming home. So, um, everybody kind of wants to get back to their normal life, um, and I can see both sides. I can, I've heard patients, you know, really concerned about opening Catalina again and then, you know, other folks who are, you know, so stressed about losing their businesses and their jobs, and so there's, it's such a hard position to be in to make those decisions on how and when to open. Um, but, you know, we've done such a great job and we're prepared. So I think that as long as we stay, stay the course and are super organized and we make decisions on a, in a, you know, responsible sort of stepwise manner and we prepare our community and we are open communication to the community and they're part of that decision-making process, even if they're, um, you know, just as long as they're involved in it, I think that you'll have a better, you know, a better sort of understanding and I think people will be more open to, because everybody's afraid, right? Everybody's afraid. So if you can just speak to that and acknowledge that, I think that will help a lot in easing people's fears.
All right. Perfect. I just had a couple of questions. One, is there a lower age limit for testing? Is it, anyone can be tested?
Yep.
Okay. And then the other thing is just, uh, I think people have been talking about contact tracing a lot. I have a couple of friends that are really great at tracking what they do every day and I know for me, it feels like every day has run together for the last sixty days, so, um, are there any suggestions you have for contact tracing that people can just be actively doing as we start getting into the process of opening back up so they know where they've been, who they've been with?
Yeah.
Timing, is there anything you recommend or a good practice that you've seen?
Yeah, I've thought a lot about that also because I'm the worst as far as my memory. I'm like, was that yesterday? Was that four days ago? I have no idea when I saw that person. Um, but I think there's a lot of apps being, being, um, you know, developed is from Apple and Google, they're sort of working together to, to sort of deal with that specific problem because it, this is an issue as far as just relying on your own memory of who have you been in contact with. So, um, I think that I'm going to leave that to the geniuses at Apple and Google and hopefully they'll come up with something that will really help us out with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if that's it?
No, uh, did you say it was impossible really to test any visitors?
I don't say, I wouldn't say it's impossible, but I don't, I don't think that's a necessarily a realistic or viable option at this point, you know, because we don't have a good point of care test that's just available to give us test results within a couple of minutes before they're boarding, say, a ferry or that kind of thing. So, um, it's not an impossible endeavor, but I don't, I don't think that that's something that could be, um, instated, you know, rapidly enough to, um, you know, kind of be a realistic thing for this current reopening that's going to be happening within weeks to months. Um, I do think that having some sort of- I do think that having some sort of, you know, communication with tourists that are coming over as far as not traveling when you're sick and all those sort of, you know, warnings that are out there just to make sure that tourists are being mindful not to come over when they're sick. But again, I don't think, even if it's, if we did test everybody with a point-of-care test, you're still not going to catch everybody because you're still going to have those false negatives, you know. So I don't think, in my opinion, that's not a good use of the testing resources at this time. Like if we had just bountiful and plentiful testing capabilities and it was instantaneous, that might be a different story, but that's just not where we're at right now.
And then the number that you have posted on the website, will that be both tests on there?
So I think they're separated out from antigen tests and antibody tests. So the antibody test, like I said, we just kind of started doing that. We rolled that out just this week or maybe even last week was the earliest that we've started running those. So I don't know if people are as interested in the antibody test, but if, if we put them, if they are out on the website, we will separate them out.
Do you know, Jason, if they're, if they're antibody tests?
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that people are more interested in, you know, who's sick, you know? It's not who has been sick. So that's kind of what we've been putting out on the website.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
I just want to commend the hospital staff.
Absolutely.
You guys have been amazing.
Well, thanks.
In keeping us informed. It's, it's just been phenomenal.
Thank you. Yeah, the team has been amazing. And I, like I said, I just feel so grateful that we have the team that we do right now. It's just been like this huge blessing. So it's, it's been really great.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that reminder. So that is an important thing to talk about. So testing for COVID, whether it be antibody or antigen testing or visits with the provider, it should all be covered, whether you have insurance or not. So no out-of-pocket expenses for that. So we hope that that's not a barrier, whether or not you have documentation or insurance or identification. All those things should not be barriers to come in and being tested. So we're really trying to open that up to everyone in the community, regardless of your financial or document situation, so.
And you do want them to make an appointment or at least contact the hospital before they come up?
Yes, yes. So that's a good thing to remind everybody to. Just always call the clinic, which, call the clinic and make an appointment to see one of the providers where they're five days a week and we'll help you get situated with what you need.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.